Next, we have our state aid.
As I mentioned before, we did receive an increase in it. And it was about, just under 16 percent increase in estate aid. And that's, our state aid makes up about 3.67 percent of our operating budget. And going into next year's budget, we are going to be withdrawing some money from maintenance reserve. We can only use this money towards ordinary maintenance. So from, this is one of our savings from year to year. We've been putting some money into it. So now, we're going to be taking some out to use it in the budget. And as you can see, the increase is 1.2 million dollars. That amounts to the same number that was on an earlier slide, or it's 3.95 percent increase. All right? Next is our operating expenditures. For next year, we're proposing it to be 31,568 dollars. Now, I'll go into a little more detail for, in each category. Our instructional programs, this includes all of our regular programs, all salaries for all staff, any substitute teachers or class coverage or anything like that. And we also have any professional services are in here, any professional development is budgeted in here. We also have budget for our basic skills and our ESL departments. Our media services is, are all the, sorry, I went to, I had one slide here, hit the button. Media services is all of our, in our library. We have salaries of all of our media specialists and also some copier charges are in here. And then, there's some, the virtual high school program is budgeted in here and some other homework now and some other items that are used towards the media. And also, our instructional staff training is budgeted here. It includes a percentage of our salaries for our district supervisors. And also, we have our map assessment is in here, some testing, and MobiMax, our workshops and Performance Matters, and a lot of our testing that we do is budgeted in here. Now, we have our special education budget. This includes all of our salaries for all of our special ed teachers, for our resource program, our preschool disabilities program, our LLD program is all, the salaries are budgeted in here. And also, our out-of-district tuition. We currently have 35 students that are placed outside of our schools in a private, privately disabled schools. So it includes all those salaries. And some of that, this money here is offset by our IDA grant. So this 2.6 million dollars would be higher, but we do get some money from the state to help offset that. And we also have, the related and extraordinary services, these are basically the services, any speech or OT or PT that we have to give to our students is budgeted here. And our child study team is also, but here, a lot of their salaries and professional development. Next, we have our biggest increase, our employee benefits. Here we have our social security. This is the FICA payments that we pay out for the non-certified staff, such as our secretaries and custodians. We also have our retirement contributions. They're also paid for our non-certified employees here. Our workers' comp is the premium that we pay for insurance coverage for all of our employees. Tuition reimbursement and other contractual obligations as part of the contract that we have to budget for to pay out for our staff. And lastly, our health benefits. It is a big increase. For this past year, our medical benefits are going to be going up 24 percent, and our prescription benefits are going to be going up 17 percent. We did have over the previous 12 months, is how they usually base our increase from year to year, and our claims history, meaning how much money our insurance carrier pays out from the money that we give them in our premium. For our medical, it was 109.2 percent. And for our prescription, it was 104 percent, which are both very high. I've, in all my years, I've never seen them that high. So that's what led to the very large increase. So we're hoping that next year is a better year for that. It was catastrophic.
It was catastrophic.
It was terribly catastrophic.
Mike, I'm sorry, you said the prescription went up 17 percent?
Yeah.
And what was the other, the actual medical coverage went up?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four percent?
And the prescription was 17?
Yep. Yep. But the good news is that our dental went down a little bit.
Oh, that's great.
Oh, good. Twenty dollars?
Yeah.
So we don't have good teeth, but we are.
Next, we have our support services. Here, we have, again, too quick. I have our attendance and health services. This is all of our nursing salaries are all budgeted here. Also, our school physician. We also have our guidance salaries for all of our guidance counselors in the high school and middle school. And we also have software that we use for the students. It's called Genesis. We also have our administrative costs for all levels, for the superintendent's office, for the business office, and all of the school administration. And also, the technology department is also included in here. So we have that. Next, we have transportation. It's good here. This includes our routes for all of our special ed and regular students, and also some field trips and all of our athletic away games is a budget here. And we also have to pay out for any parent that attends a non-public school. We have to reimburse them for transportation to it to go to those schools. That's at a thousand dollars each, so that's all budgeted in here. And athletics and co-curricular, that includes all of our coaching salaries, salaries for the trainer and any game help that we have, supplies for all teams and league and conference dues, and also advisors that we have in the school is in here. Also, we have a food service is included in here. The Board of Ed pays for our pre and reduced students because we're not part of the National Lunch Program. So this number has been going down over the last couple of years. The program has been doing a little bit better, so we are able to budget a little bit less. And hopefully, over the next few years, we'll be able to not have to contribute at all to this program. Next is our operations and maintenance. This includes all of our salaries for all of our custodial and maintenance and grounds staff. They help maintain, they help maintain the building, all the supplies, the cleaning, and all any services that we have, including any boiler repair or electrical repair or plumbing repair. That's all budgeted here. And also, we have our gas and electric expenses are budgeted here, and also our liability insurance for each building. And we also have budget in here for security. It is going up a little bit. We do have, in anticipation of the security referendum, we do have some annual costs that we're going to have to start maintaining each year, so that is factored into the budget. And our capital outlay, have it going down. This is basically our, we have to pay an amount of money to the state because we have, the state bonded some of our money. So it's just a fee that the state charges for that. And next slide is a new slide to this presentation. I just want to show, basically, the budget is broken into, you have your fixed costs and you have your discretionary costs. Now, your fixed costs are the ones that you know you're going to have to spend. We include here salaries, benefits, any pension contributions, insurance. They're all basically contractual benefits that we know that we're going to have to pay. That amounts to 77.25 percent of our budget, which is a large number. The next category is our students. This is any special ed out-of-district tuition that we spend, any transportation for a student related, and also any evaluations or any OT or PT or evaluations is included here. That amounts to 14.31 percent of the budget. And last is sort of another category. It includes all of our energy expenses, our PSCNG bills. Communication is basically the internet and how we connect to all the buildings. And we do have professional expenses, our legal and our auditor fee is included here. And that's just under 3 percent. So if you add everything up, it's almost 95 percent of our budget is basically fixed costs that we know we're going to have to spend every year. So that leaves a little over 1.7 million dollars in discretionary funds. Now, when the discretionary funds, we have to basically fit everything else, and a lot of the requests that the principals or directors, they make is included in our discretionary budget. So such as all of our supplies and textbooks, that amounts to about $600,000 in our budget. Our co-curricular and athletics, that amounts to about $850,000. So if you add those two up right there, that's 1.3 million. So, you know, we have to fit the rest of all the requests, have to be fit into the budget. So I just want to, I think it's a good, the number has been decreasing each year. Our fixed cost has been going up, and our discretionary expenses have been going down. So that just shows that our budget is lean and we're looking closely at it every year. Next is the tax impact for our operating budget. The average assessed house is 468,200 dollars in the town, and it amounts to an average increase annually of 196.75 to the average assessed home. Per month, that's 16.40 per week, $3.78, and per day is 54 cents. Now, this all amounts to a 2.98 percent tax increase for the operating budget. And also, I just want to point out that our other ratables have decreased this year. So when this happens, that just means that our, the money goes up for the average taxpayer. So hopefully, that, you know, the last year, it did go up, so that helped us out. And this year, it went down, so that hurt us. And that's the presentation. Anybody have any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, as always.
So despite the, looking like the only thing we're spending additional funds on is on health insurance, we actually do actually have some exciting increases to look forward to for the 19, 20 school year. So the first thing is, we'll be offering a robotics two class. It was very successful robotics one this year, so we're going to be offering robotics two next year. Something else that's really exciting is we've been trying to move towards a one-to-one ratio for Chromebooks for students. And so what we're doing for next year is it'll be a one-to-one for the fifth grade and the ninth grade.
Nice.
And so they'll be able to bring them home and use them. And so I think that gets us almost a one-to-one for everyone. We're almost there.
Almost.
Almost there, but we're starting with the fifth and the ninth graders. And so, yeah, so we're very excited about that. And then, in addition, we just needed additional manpower in the middle school office, so we are making a person who's not quite full-time, full-time. And then, we needed an additional lunch aid at South End. So we are able to eke out a few new things for next year. But I'm excited about the Chromebook situation, though. I think that's good, especially as we move to, you know, in the era of technology and everybody's using Chromebooks, and everybody should have access to their own. So we're getting there.
And the great thing about the robotics two, being that we're pushing all this stem and steam up from the middle school, we're carrying it through up at the high school.
Absolutely.
To fully complete the process.
Right. No, I think that's great.
Kids are excited about it.
Oh, they can't.
This is all for net for starting in September, correct?
Yep, for this fall. Absolutely. All right, well, thank you very much. If there aren't any other questions on the budget, we will move on from the agenda. From the Office of the Business Administrator and Board Secretary, under minutes, can I have a motion for B1 through B4?
So moved.
Second.
B1 is a motion to approve the public and executive minutes of April 9th. B2 is a motion to approve the treasurer's report for the month of March. B3 is a motion to approve the board secretary report for the month of March. And B4 is a motion to approve the board secretary certification to the Cedar Grove Board of Education pursuant to the code as listed. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
I abstain from B1. Yes to the rest.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under bills, can I have a motion for B5?
So moved.
Second.
B5 is a motion to pay the list of bills that were included in our packet this evening. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Everybody in unison. Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under business, can I have a motion for B6 through, that's an S, through, Mike, page one more back, B15?
So moved.
Second.
B6, resolve that the Cedar Grove Board of Education approves the use of the 2019-20 healthcare cost adjustment in the amount of 199,921 dollars for the 19-20 school year. B7, resolve that the Cedar Grove Board of Education approves the need and use of the banked cap in an amount of 71,667 for the 19-20 school year. B8, resolve that the final budget numbers listed below are adopted for the 19-20 school year. B9 is a motion to approve setting the travel maximum for the 19-20 school year. B10 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with L Studios and the Cedar Grove Board of Education. B11 is a motion to approve the subscription busing contract with the parents of the student number listed and the amount listed. B12 is a motion to retroactively approve the location agreement with Batu Productions and the Cedar Grove Board of Education. B13 is a motion that the Cedar Grove Board of Education accepts the recommendation of its insurance broker, IMAC Insurance Agency, and approves the award of a contract to Horizon Blue Cross Blue Shield to provide health and prescription drug insurance benefits. B14 is a motion to approve an agreement with Delta Dental of New Jersey to provide dental insurance coverage. And B15 is a motion to approve Ameriflex benefits specialist as a Cedar Grove Board of Education Cobra Administrator. Any discussion?
No.
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Under personnel, we have a report this evening?
Oh, yes.
Oh, goodie.
Very exciting. It's changed again.
Got to keep it interesting, got to keep it alive. You know, it seemed like a short month, but we did manage to pack in an incredible amount of exciting and innovative activities, not the least of which was recognizing, as we do every April, Autism Awareness Month. You know, really, in this district, we tried, whoa, it's, what did I do now, Angel? There it is, okay.
We gave you that wireless mouse, and look what happens.
You think I could figure it out from here? Thank you. You know, it really is a pre-K through 12 effort, you know, that we try to go beyond not just promoting awareness, but really inspiring a movement. You know, as a loving uncle myself of a nephew on the spectrum, you know, it certainly hits near and dear to myself and my family that we educate, promote, and inspire an awareness of autism spectrum disorder. And so, this monthly features, this monthly newsletter features a lot of that. So there's links that I've embedded here that talk about some of the good news. Yes, I also mentioned the CDC statistics that since 2016, we've seen a 19 percent increase in diagnoses of ASD. That's not the good news, but the way we're responding is. And so, I couldn't be more proud of my alma mater, Rutgers University, for the things that they've been doing with their new autism center. If you click on these links here, you'll find what's going on at Rutgers today. And so, these articles will feature what this new and innovative research, treatment, and facility program is doing for kids and young adults with autism spectrum disorder. It's not just Rutgers, of course, but the New Jersey Department of Health is running all kinds of innovative programs, the registry included. If you click on this link, it'll take you to their website. Talks all about those efforts here. I encourage you to find some time to do that. And what's going on at the New Jersey Department of Education? Well, so much. So find some time, please, and go through this link here and click on the many opportunities that the Department of Education is making available for families and youngsters with autism spectrum disorder. And so, and as I'd said, as a proud uncle, you know, it's really something that, you know, we as citizens need to figure out. You know, diagnoses, statistics are up, and, you know, what do we do with these young people as they become adults? Where do they go? How do they thrive? And it's certainly our prerogative to figure it out. As always, there's a link to the Friday folder. And from here, we really just highlight a lot of the great things that are going on at South End, you know, from reading workshops. Again, I don't want to give it all away. You just find some time, some Greek mythology going on in media. You know, they made connection with Rick Reardon, one of the authors that they're reading, via webcast, and just great stuff, bringing literature to life, exposing kids to college and career concepts. I'm sure you've all heard it, why are we reading this? Why are we studying that? Well, here's why, here's partly why. There are jobs out there, there are careers, there are people who inspire us to read, to write. And for our kids to get to know those folks is really something special. What's going on at North End? Well, take a look for yourself. So many great things going on related to language arts. You know, I love when we talk about similes, metaphors, and hyperbolas, you know, some great stuff going on at North End in the fourth grade class. Certainly, Mrs. Martin, we love highlighting the great work that kids are doing at both North End and South End. So take a look at that. Yes, that's Dumbo. You may recognize that one there. Some really cool stuff. So when you have some time, you know, read through that. Of course, at the middle school, like in all of other schools, they did highlight Autism Awareness Month. And I have to give a shout out to the MMS Student Council for doing so, raising funds, creating posters, getting the staff involved for Light It Up Blue, just all great stuff. Congratulations to our MobiMax Spring Challenge Award winners and 1,000-point earners, I mean, kids practicing, earning those points, really great stuff going on. Shout out to Ms. Tursia and Mrs. Ichenko's classes for the work they've done with MobiMax. Just some great stuff. Love the looks on the kids' faces. Again, more highlighting Autism Awareness Month. How great was the production of Alice in Wonderland Jr.? Those of us that saw it, I was there Friday night, what a great show, so much fun. The kids really get into it. You know, it's a team effort from creating the billboards, the posters. So many youngsters were involved in that production, just great stuff. Can't leave out the high school, lots of stuff going on there, and Ms. Shitofsky's biology lab classes, some really interesting stuff there going on in environmental science as well. I also embedded a link here for our driver's education program. Mr. Valenzano, for seven years running now, has put a team together to participate in the You Got Brains competition. It's really fun. You click on here, you can watch, it's about a seven-minute video. Check that out, it's real good stuff. For information on that program, the link is there also for your information. Just some other stuff going on at the high school in US history and in math, using virtual reality to help, you know, just bring what we're talking about to life. That's what it's about. And highlighting some other things going on here, that's Ms. Mishia, of course. We all know this gentleman here, going to TC&J, Peter Corso, and Maggie Stroh, a TC&J graduate. This was a great moment here, I'll read it to you. CG and TC&J pride, newly accepted to the College of New Jersey, senior Peter Corso attended a recent alumni event with CG's K-12 math science supervisor. Here she is, Ms. Janine Barbosa, along with, PS, 2002, class of TC&J, and K-4 music teacher, Mrs. Maggie Stroh, class of 2016 TC&J. So that was a great moment for them. And PS, the 16th president of TC&J, just so happens to live in Verona. So that was great. And just, you know, little advertisement for our Cedar Grove Music Program and Music Matters. And of course, if you'd like to donate, become part of our giving tree, here's how to do that. Shout out for social media, check us out, follow us.
Thank you very much.
Yes, thank you.
Signing things going on.
Yeah.
All right. Under personnel, can I have a motion for S1 through S11?
So moved.
Second.
S1 is a motion to approve the superintendent's report. S2 is a motion to affirm the superintendent's report on harassment, intimidation, and bullying from April 9th. S3 is a motion to approve an adjustment to the 18-19 district calendar to reflect the use of one available emergency closing day on Tuesday, May 28th. S4 is a motion to approve Anthony Longo for custodial employment as follows. S5 is a motion to amend the high school guidance counselor stipend for Meredith Denman. S6 is a motion to amend the guidance counselor maternity leave position start date for Katrina Shabab. S7 is a motion to authorize attendance at the following events. S8 is a motion to approve the following leaves of absence. S9 is a motion to approve following students for classroom observation. S10 is a motion to approve Michael Palladino, substitute teacher, at the rate listed. And S11 is a motion to approve the following school volunteer. Any discussion?
No, ma'am.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
I abstain from S2. Yes to everything else.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. The meeting is open to the public for comments on items on or off the agenda. Seeing none? All righty. Announcement of future meetings, May 7th, same time, same place. And then, May 21st, I believe, is in discussion, and we'll be moving the date to be determined after we figure it out. So that's that, right? Anything further?
That's a good plan.
Yeah.
No?
Nope.
All right, can I have a motion to reconvene to exec?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Mrs. DeChiaro.
Yes.
Mrs. Miga.
Yes.
Mr. Pavulovich.
Yes.
Mr. Schoner.
Yes.
Mrs. Dai.
Yes. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.